Good evening and welcome to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for February 25, 2019. If you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off during the meeting. If you wish to speak in favor or in opposition of a petition, please come to the podium, state your name, and sign in for the record. Also, for a matter of notice, tonight's alternate member voting will be Mr. Mark Brier. Moving directly into continued business under ZB 2019-3 for variance, Michael McGuire at 152 Jewett Street, Section 5.1. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family home at 152 Jewett Street. The proposed home is in traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for the minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, and maximum floor area ratio, and for any other relief required under the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor, how are you?
It was also suggested, last time we appeared, that we go out and we meet with the neighbors and talk to the neighbors. Michael McGuire was able to go out. He knocked on several doors. He spoke with several neighbors pertaining to his proposed construction of the single-family home on the lot, and I think he can probably speak to that.
I've got a list of nine or 10 people that I was able to speak to. I went down Jewett Street, Coburn Street, Richardson Ave., and there was no one in opposition to the building being constructed.
Did you bring a-- do you have a copy of-- is there a letter of petition signing by?
No, it's just signatures that I got from them.
Can I take a look at it, please? Thank you. Thank you. Anything further, Counselor?
No.
Thank you. Well, we do appreciate the efforts that you put forth in this and taking the recommendations of the Board. We did receive the updated plans via email. This letter comes into favor as far as what Vice Chairman Peck had asked for, was seeing what the input of the neighborhood was, which is always is valued with this type of-- this size of reduction. So, if you have nothing further, I'm going to move. And if you have anything after questions from the Board, we can go in that direction.
Okay.
This time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
John Leahy, 87 Glenwood Street, Lowell, Mass. Just as a private citizen, the only thing I did want to say is, you know, I don't know-- I saw the plans, and they looked good. But the only thing I want to question is, when we make zoning laws and requirements, this just seems like a lot. So, I just wondering why, you know, we would even entertain a project like this. So, that's my only objection. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the Board, Mark?
I believe that the desired zoning relief that is requested here can be granted without detriment to the public good or the existing character of the neighborhood. I've been pretty consistent about my feelings with respect to the Lower Senegal neighborhood, and I think it'll be a very good addition to that neighborhood. I believe that you had the signatures of 10 abutters that we had requested at the last month, and it's not a single abutter opposed to the project. I think that adding a new home in this rather densely populated neighborhood helps. It helps the character of the neighborhood, helps the appreciation of the neighboring homes, and it helps the tax base of the city. I think this is a relief that we can grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Three, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would thank the petitioners and Counsel for taking the advice of the Board in the last hearing and providing all this information. It's very helpful, and I certainly appreciate going out to the neighborhood and going and speaking with them to get their input on this. I do share some of the same sentiments that were presented by Mr. Leahy on as far as how we're supposed to gauge some of these things. Sometimes zoning is a bit obscure, abroad, and-- but in this instance, I think this is a project that could fit in with the neighborhood, and I think I would be voting in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Ms. Flood and Mr. McGuire for all the updated site plans and the architecture plan, and for reaching out to the neighborhood. I just really appreciate it. You know, I do share the sentiments and some of the ideas of Mr. Callen and Mr. Leahy. It is quite a bit of relief, in my opinion, you know, but I think Mr. Callen said it well. You know, this zoning can be a little bit obscure or open-ended. But, you know, as of right now, I think it's probably the best project for that site. So, overall, I think it is something that's palatable to the neighborhood and to the city. So, those are just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Flood. I mean, that's quite some effort. Mr. Leahy, I just want to ask you a question. Yes, yes. Yes, sorry. You said we have zoning boards. That's the reason why I think this board is here for, you know? So that there are some obscurities we are here to fill in those variances. Right. So, I'm not talking on behalf of them, but basically, I'm trying to answer your question. Yep. Probably they are setting, you know, variances. I mean, not all constructions we made it. That's why we're here to give that variance, basically. Right. So, I just wanted to address that. I hope I addressed that concern for you.
It doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, I just, you know, it's a lot of relief, and I just, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Your concern is we have zoning laws. Yes, we have them, but probably they might not meet the laws, but we're here to address those things. Yeah, probably that's why we're here. Yep. So, I just want to answer that.
Thank you.
Concerning the lady that was here, was she the Board of the neighborhood Board? The one that was against it the last time?
For the record, Philip, no, that was Anne Marie Page. She's the president of the--
Yeah, yeah.
Correct me if, Mr. Brier, if you help me. She's the president of Senegal Neighborhood Association, or?
Yeah.
Yes, Senegal knows--
Yeah. Were you able to reach out to her?
I did. I spoke with her, and she told me that she was not going to appear tonight. She asked me if Mike had reached out to the neighbors, and basically if the neighbors didn't have a problem with it, that she didn't see an issue.
Okay, all right. Well, have not been here means it's a consent. All right, thank you.
Yes, I did speak with her. I spoke with her after the meeting last time I was here, and I also spoke with her today on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Just want to touch that base, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. So, you heard the comments of the Board. Do you have any response to anything or anything further to add at this point, Counselor?
No, I don't believe I do.
I do look at this property. It's very well-maintained, stands a garage. It's in a very tight-knit neighborhood. Everyone who had spoken in opposition during our last meeting also referenced the need to maintain some standards within the neighborhood. One comment that did stick out to me that I've been thinking over and over again was, well, why wouldn't the owner of the property, in this case, Mr. McGuire, sell it to a neighbor? Unless there was anyone in the neighborhood looking to purchase this property, I think they would have reached out to you. I also think if anything, they would be in front of this Board requesting the same exact thing as the new owner of a property that may be buildable. They also had concerns after speaking with some of the neighbors over there. After last meeting, I went for a walk myself, and the other concern was that if someone did buy this property, they would want to turn it into a parking lot or a two-car garage. Or in some of the older neighborhoods of Senegal, where I lived for a good portion of my life, there are three-car garages that are rented out now, and then they're taken down and they become buildable lots. So, I think we face a lot of, you know, concern. We look at the zoning laws, we look at what a variance is and what it represents, and Mr. McCarthy raised a concern that this doesn't represent an allowable variance. So, I think in this particular case, and in this particular section of the city, that as Philip has mentioned and the other Board members has mentioned, that there is a need to have some type of jurisdictional prudence, if you will, and make decisions that's in the benefit of the city. And I think in this particular case, as Mr. Brier alluded to in last meeting, is maintaining the consistency of the neighborhood, adding tax dollars to the rules. McGuire, you made it-- you had full disclosure, you're going to build a home and sell it. That's what you do for a living, that's your job. So, you know, we can certainly look into that. I do agree with Mr. Leahy and the concerns with Mr. McCarthy, respectively, that this is half the relief requested. It's a tough one, and I've been on this Board for a while, and I always defer to what our citizens say in opposition or in favor, and I take that into great account. I don't agree with every zoning rule, every ordinance within our ordinance. I don't agree with all the laws of the city, but at some point, you have to bear in mind what the neighborhood thinks. Profoundly, there's no other opposition here. I think you did your due diligence, Mr. McGuire, going into the neighborhood and getting a true feel, and I think when we look at it, that's what Lowell is all about, is understanding and working with your neighbors, working with government, and moving forward. So, I just wanted to have those comments placed on the record because there is concern amongst the Board for this size of relief. There's definitely some concern by our citizens who came in to speak tonight and previously. So, those are my comments. Anyone else have anything they wish to say in reference to this? I also will say, you know, on the record that we're here to take each petition case by case, and I'm sure there were concerns in the back of not just my mind, but others' minds that this opens the flood door for half-relief efforts throughout the city, and I can't express it clearly from my position that, you know, this is not going to be and shouldn't be an avenue for open recourse for half-relief and zoning in the city of Lowell. So, it's important to know your limitations, do your due diligence, make the efforts with the city and the Department of Planning and Development, as well as the citizens, and make a decision and move on. So, any other comments at this time? Philip?
Yeah. When did you intend to construct this? When do you want to do this?
When are you going to construct it, Mike?
If it's permitted, I'll start it as soon as possible.
Okay. Probably during the construction, just make sure you don't block traffic, especially, you know, my friend used to live in that area, and it can be congested.
Thank you, Philip. Now, bringing that in mind, since we've opened up the construction piece of it, potential is there. If your memory serves, as I believe mine does, there was concerns-- I don't recall if it was raised by a Board member or a member of the public-- concerns about your construction dumpsters. Please maintain clean, neat, orderly, and secure. It's very tight over there. You're going to be taking down a garage. I'm not going to speak to your business, but just take that into mind as you move forward if you're approved. I do recall that as a concern, where the dumpster will be going, how it will be secured, how it will be emptied, and maintain that openness. Okay? Any other? That being said, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-3 for 152 Jewett Street for a variance under Section 5.1 to construct a single-family home.
Second. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Brier. May I have a roll call? Approve.
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 Approval.
Approved.
Counsel, you have been approved. Mr. McGuire, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And please move forward accordingly. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to second continued business, ZB 2019-5 for a variance. Variance is by Ann Ponary at 31 Robin Street, Section 5.1. The applicant proposes to construct a two-story addition onto their existing two-family home at 31 Robin Street. The home is in traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and the addition requires approval under Section 5.1 for maximum floor ratio and for any other relief as required on Lowell's ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening? If you may approach the podium, sir. State your name, sign in for the record.
My name is Peter. I am a builder.
Okay, Peter. Could you state your full name and your address?
My name is Peter Ngat, N-G-A-T-H.
Okay.
I address 3 Ballard Court, Regent, Mass.
Okay. And before you leave, make sure you sign in as a public record. Are you the builder of record?
Yeah, I am a builder.
Great. Glad to see you here tonight.
Yeah.
We made this continuance in order for you to be here to help us get through this petition with questions and answers that we have--
Yeah.
--and to help your client.
I have him, yeah.
Okay. So, tell us a little bit about the project and what you're here for.
The house right now, he has two-family home. He lives on first floor, only one bedroom. Now, he needs some more room for the kids. He has two bedrooms.
So, do you have the chance to review a copy of the comments that were provided to Mr. Ponary at the last hearing from DPD? It was a page full of comments. There was a page-- there was a letter of comments presented to-- Mr. Ponary at the time of-- No. It would be a memorandum from the city of Lowell. That's part of it. Should be a four-page document.
Yeah.
Okay. If you would, if you'd just have that in here, because I'm sure there's going to be questions to it. Okay? Do you have all five pages of that comment?
Yeah, all five pages. Can I give you my glass?
Sure, absolutely. It was a three? I apologize. Should be three pages. Do you have anything else you want to say at this time?
Say again.
Do you have anything else you want to bring to our attention?
No.
No? Okay. That being said, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening. Yep, no, certainly, sir. Gentlemen, if you please allow gentlemen to approach the podium.
My name is Joe Pierce.
Sir, if you could approach the podium, gentlemen. You'll just have to step aside. We've got tight quarters tonight. Yeah, if you go to the mic.
My name's Joe Pierce. I lived in the neighborhood for over three decades, and I'm in opposition as well as some of the other neighbors because we really don't want to see any more construction going on in the neighborhood. And I'll explain a little bit. Back a little bit after prehistoric times when my kids were younger, they'd be playing in the streets, they'd be playing in the backyards. I'm talking about family homes that have been converted into multiple duplexes with additions. At the end of the street, on Robin Street, there's these very large apartment complexes that has multiple residences. Now, what that's done, it's not only increased the density of the neighborhood of people, but it's added tremendous car traffic, traffic and even people competing for parking spots. Any time of the day, if you come down Pine Street, heading into the city, try turning into Robin Street. And you can't, because there's cars parked right at the edge, going right down the street. And the concern, again, is to add, to increase any of the properties that are there, whether it be an addition, and please, nothing personal here, other than, we're just afraid that it's going to add to the density to a neighborhood that's already stressed. And I'm talking about, if you look at these side streets that are even feeding Westford Street, I mean, Westford Street's a real challenge to get down, if you will, during an early morning or an afternoon rush. You throw in the mixture of school buses coming up and down that street, and suddenly, getting traffic to go by there is an issue. There's always kids in the neighborhood. So, with that being said, I'm against it. Any questions for me?
No, thank you, we appreciate you coming out. Look, excuse me, sir, if you don't mind signing in?
Sure.
Please.
Who's that, Brier?
Should be a attendant sheet with a pen. And you'll need to sign in as well, and the petitioner, both of you will after you. Please. Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? Thank you very much.
Hi, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your patience.
My name is Beth McKenzie. I live at 40 Robin Street, which is diagonally across from their house. And they're great neighbors, we get along well, we like them very much. My only opposition to him adding additional bedrooms is, especially with his rental unit, additional bedrooms means additional tenants. And additional tenants in our neighborhood means additional cars. And, you know, we're a lot of single-family and two-families, and there's a minimum of three cars at every house. Their house has two cars that park in the back, two that are permanently on the street, one has not moved yet this winter. It's been covered with snow every single storm, to the point where I went over and put a note on it, asked them to please move it before it next snowed again, and it has still never moved. They have tenants upstairs, and, again, more bedrooms means more tenants, and we're just afraid of yet more cars. We had to finally break down my neighbor and myself, and purchase parking permit signs, because we just couldn't handle the number of people that are constantly parked in front of our house, so that we can't even park in front of our own house. We all have driveways, but nobody seems to want to park in them. Not that it's necessarily their fault or anything, but the neighbors next to them have at any given time, seven cars at their house. So, and they're a one-bedroom house. So, we can see the number of cars, they have people that are sleeping in non-legal bedrooms. It's just a domino effect. One thing leads to another, leads to another, and just keeps ballooning. I'd love to see them have another bedroom, they have a young child, they probably need another bedroom. I'm really just concerned about the tenants, in their upstairs apartment. I do also have a letter that my next-door neighbor, who wasn't able to come with us tonight, asked me to bring. It's actually a text on my phone, I don't know if you want me to read it, if I can read it on her behalf?
By all means, you can read it, and I'll take a look at it, it is 2019.
Yeah, she had every intention of coming with me tonight, and at the last minute, she couldn't make it, so I just asked her to text me something. Her name is Karen Klosanos, and she lives directly next door to me at 44 Robin Street. And her note is, "To whom it may concern, I am unable to attend the hearing tonight due to illness. Let it be known that I do not support the two-story addition at 31 Robin Street. There is already too much traffic, noise, parking issues, and late-night noisy parties in the neighborhood. Please preserve the existing integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you. Karen Klosanos, 44 Robin Street." And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, and I'll just sign in quickly before I leave. I'll short hand.
Jared, are we having the record of the red text written into?
Yeah.
I'm happy to forward it to you, if you need me to.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
If you give me something to forward it to.
Yeah. Place it into public record.
Right, I'll send it to you right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Sir? Sir, please?
My name is Peter Chagaiuly, C-H-A-G-A-I-U-L-Y, number nine, Bird Street. It's hard to say, you know, this gentleman, I'd be against this gentleman, but there are just so many people, and so many cars in the neighborhood, the density is something else. We have people at two-family homes, one family lives on one side, three families unrelated live on another side. Okay? There's eight cars, all right? This is the same thing that's going on in Robin Street. We do not wish to have any more density, or any more cars. Okay? The problem is, the other day, at the top of Robin Street, the police were called, because cars were parked in the crosswalk, all right? Because there are apartment buildings at the top of the street, which approximately have 60 to 80 cars alone, both sides of the street. Okay? It's just too dense, and we don't need any more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Sir, if you, sir, if you could approach the lecturn, and state your name, and sign in for the record, please.
You can speak right from there, so it can be on public record in the microphone, sir. Thank you.
Do these work? Because I'm not hearing too well in here.
No, they work, there's just no sound.
My name's Bill Riley, I'm a taxpayer in Lowell. Recently, I read that the amount of cars that are on the road today in this country have gone up by 25 percent. So, the excuse that there's too many cars, don't necessarily have to deal with somebody having an extra bedroom for his family. There's too many cars on this road, as there is, and the country's not addressing the problem by widening the roads, or making more bridges, or improving the bridges. So, me, as a taxpayer in Lowell, I would welcome an opportunity, not my own property, but if you want to charge this poor gentleman a little more money for another bedroom, then so be it. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, sir. You cannot, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner, yeah, thinking... So I had a couple, a couple of questions. First of all, it's a two-family house, Bill, right? Correct?
Yeah. Only the first floor, the one, he lived only one bedroom only, but he had, he needed a room for the kid.
Okay. How many bedrooms are in the first, are in each unit?
One, one on the first.
One bedroom on the first floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
DP, man. Three bedroom on second floor.
Three bedrooms on the second.
But two family homes.
Okay. No, I mean, I reviewed the narrative that the petitioner's provided, and I understand the situation, and certainly, he wants to, he's trying to, you know, he's got a large family, he's trying to, you know, accommodate. But how many, if the construction is, if the variance is granted and the construction is completed, how many bedrooms are intended in each of the units?
Two more, two more bedrooms.
Are they, for, just for one unit, or for both?
The more, the three units. Both units only two bedrooms.
One bedroom for each, so the one bedroom will be two bedrooms, and then the three bedroom will be four bedrooms?
One bedroom for first floor, one bedroom for second floor.
Okay. So now, that brings up another question. Somebody mentioned you have a tenant, so one of the units is currently rented out to a tenant?
No, he lived, uh, top the summer, yeah, and then, yeah, man, children, yeah, enough I thought. Yes, for him, he own.
Okay, not related, a tenant who's not related to?
Unrelated, yeah.
To Mr. Paunery.
No, just for the kid only.
Okay. So, if you're putting, if you're extending the one-bedroom unit to a two-bedroom unit, which one has a tenant in it? Which unit?
As a second floor.
The second floor?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, so where is Mr. Paunery's family? Which unit does Mr. Paunery's family reside in right now? I'm trying to get an understanding of how the dynamic is going to work out.
Yeah, they have two family homes, but two, one unit, but the first floor, he lived one unit, and the second floor, three bedroom for tenant.
Okay. Because in his narrative, Mr. Paunery mentions, the reason he's asking for the extension to his home is to, the growth of his family requires more living space than they have, that he resides with his parents, and his wife and child, so, and he's, but, so, Mr. Paunery's residing in the one-bedroom unit with his parents, and his wife and child right now?
Yeah. We don't have enough room for the child.
Okay. That's a tight squeeze.
Yeah.
I mean, seems like a tight squeeze.
That's he want to make more bedroom for the kid, for the child.
So, but that would be the two-bedroom unit, correct?
Yeah, two-bedroom unit.
All right. Do you have, I mean, one of the other concerns I had, well, my last concern I had, the last meeting, I was going over the plans, and there was notes about demolition notes, but then again, if you're gonna...
That mistake by the drawing guy?
Yes.
I will change when I go get a permit, I change that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's going to be no demolition?
No demolition, nothing, because maybe 15 years ago, they had the garage, but they peeled it off before he bought. But the guy, he don't know, just bring the blue down, he, maybe he think that he done listen for the garage, but not, there's a hub before, 15 years ago.
Because there's no more, yeah, you're right, there's no garage in there right now.
No, no garage for 15 years ago.
Okay. Jared, I got a quick question, too, because it sounds to me, I mean, parking seems to be a big concern, but it's a two-family unit, so, at this time, Mr. Paunery is in compliance with the zoning as far as the parking's concerned, correct?
The parking requirement ordinarily is two spaces for dwelling units. It can vary depending upon the district, it might also increase depending on the number of bedrooms, but also it can vary if it's a grandfathered use. In many cases, there are residents that don't have any parking today.
Yeah.
So we continue to use this for residents without parking, because it's a low pattern of parking.
Okay. But, so at this point right now, he's got two units with four total bedrooms, and he's looking, he's seeking to extend, to extend those to five, or six bedrooms total, so, but that would be, the bedrooms would not come into play in this instance, for parking, correct? I mean, I'm certainly concerned as the, you know, some of the neighborhood, as some of the neighbors are, because it is a tight squeeze in the neighborhood over there, and parking is becoming a premium, and looking at the way the layout of Mr. Paunery's property, we'll get him back to the parking, you have the carport in the back.
Yeah.
So that's presently holding two cars?
Twenty by twenty. Twenty by twenty.
Twenty. How many cars are presently in the carport?
Four, maybe.
Four?
Yeah, twenty by twenty. One, man. Two, yeah.
Two cars in the carport?
Yeah, in the carport.
What about going up the driveway? Is anybody parking, going up the driveway?
Yeah, I'm not, apparently, no.
No? Okay.
Member Bob Callahan clarified, in that district, a two-family house requires two spaces for dwelling.
Okay. Okay. All right, that makes sense, so. I mean, I could certainly see the concern about the parking. And I can understand the growth of Mr. Paunery's family, and trying to find, you know, proper living space, he's been there for several years. And this is, I guess I can put it fairly, a little bit of the total opposite of what we were just dealing with, where the relief is not extensive, it's a little more minimal than what we were dealing with on the last hearing. But again, we're not, I'm not, each piece of property is separate and different, and unique in its own way. And again, it takes in all these other factors, and parking is always a big one with me, especially on-street parking, and especially in tightly-walled neighborhoods like that. So, I'm going to listen to what my fellow board members say at this point right now, because I'm not quite sure where I'm going to go on this, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant. So I just want to confirm, currently, you have three bedrooms, and you're trying to convert it to five, right? An additional bedroom on the first floor, and an additional bedroom on the second floor?
Two family homes.
Yeah.
Three bedroom on second floor for tenant, and one bedroom for first floor for his family.
Okay.
Not five, now we want, we had more room for the kid.
Okay, so the first floor is going to be a one-bedroom, then the second floor is going to be three, when it's done?
Yeah, no, three and three.
Okay, three, three and three?
Yeah.
Okay.
For two family homes.
Okay, so the first floor of three, will be a three-bedroom?
The first floor right now, only one.
Yes, yes, I understand that, sir, but once, the proposed project, once it's, once you're done completing your building, it's going to turn from one to three bedrooms on the first floor?
Yeah.
And the second floor is going to be a three-bedroom, or?
Yeah, three.
So, after everything's done, that's going to be three?
Yeah.
So, three on the first floor, three on the second floor? Okay. And Mr. Paunery, you live on the first floor with your wife, and like, child?
And two kids, yeah.
Okay, two child. And on the second floor, do you plan on renting it out, or is it already rented out, or?
Done already.
Okay.
Done for a long time.
I do share the concerns of the residents and the butters, in terms of parking and vehicles. So, how many cars does Mr. Paunery have, and how many vehicles do the tenants have? Do they all park inside the property, or is it, they park, like, on the street, or?
He had two cars, and the rent people, tenant, and three cars.
Yeah, three cars, okay. So, right there, I think you only zone for four vehicles, if I'm correct, right, Ms. Alvarez? It's...
The minimum requirement is four, so you know maximum requirement.
Okay. So, do you have any comments to what the neighbors and the butters said about their concerns about parking, and vehicles, and... Okay, so, do you have any comments to what the neighbors and the butters said about their concerns about parking and, and vehicles and cars, parking, you know, kinda? Do you have any comments?
Say no.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I, I do, I still have some, some concerns, and I feel like, um, um, there's some stuff missing as well, um, so, okay, so the first floor, three bedrooms, second floor, three bedrooms, um, and it's for your family, um, okay, um, I guess I'll, I'll listen to the rest of, of my colleagues, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yeah, um, did you hear the concerns of the ne- of the neighbors? Did you actually get it, their concerns about parking? Okay, well, their concerns, how many car, you have five cars right now, right? So how do you intend to address the parking issue right now? Because right now? Right now, cars are parking in the area, you know, so, like, my colleague said, or, I mean, actually, the, your neighbors, if you add, if you have any additional rooms, you're gonna have additional likely cars.
Oh, no car.
I, I understand. Right now, let's think about the future. Let me say, if he sells the vehicle, I mean, the house eventually, another tenant, we, I mean, another person who's, you know, own the, the building, probably may want to rent it to folks who, who may have cars. Now the character of the, uh, of the neighborhood is gonna change. That's not what you're thinking right now, but whoever's gonna own that building might think that way, whenever they have, is gonna say, I have three vi- I have three bedrooms, you know, I can ready to, uh, three more folks, you know, so now they're gonna have more, more cars in there. So that, that's, so obviously, that's gonna, that's one of the concerns, and actually, they also mentioned that you have cars back at the, you have cars back at the back, uh, now you say you have two, and, you know, they're having issues with parking, so, with me, until I see how you're gonna address the parking issue, that would be my concern.
Can, can hit on inside, yeah, like parking lot.
Well, that's not what your neighbors are saying. That's not what your neighbors are saying.
Yeah.
Um, you can propose that to us, but they live, they live next to you.
Parking lot over there, and mostly, and two family home, every house only three bedroom, this one only one bedroom, and not fear for he, he have two children and wife and husband.
I wa- I want you to get my point of view. I don't live on that neighborhood. They live there, so with me, we can give you the variance and walk away, but they're gonna, they're gonna have to leave with you, and right now, they are saying that they're having issues with parking, so it's not us. I mean, going through here, I mean, to give you variance is fine, it's not, it's not, it's not an issue for you to extend, but now it's the parking issue, how do you intend to address it? Which we, which, uh, your neighbor, your, your neighbors we go along with. That's, that's my concern.
Very well, thank you, Philip. Mark?
I apologize if my initial questions seem rather redundant, but in the interest of clarity, there are two units in the building. The owner of the property lives on the first floor, correct?
Yep.
All right. Currently, the first floor has one bedroom. Is that correct?
Yeah, one bedroom, yeah.
And you propose to add?
Two more.
Two bedrooms?
Yeah.
To the first floor unit?
Yeah.
The second floor unit, which is a rental property, as it's currently constructed, has three bedrooms, correct?
Yep.
All right, so the additions that are being, that you propose are all being made to the owner's residence?
Yep.
The unit that he intends to live in?
Yep.
All right. As it's presently cons- excuse me, is there a clarification? No, no, did you, did I, did I misspeak?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, as the house is presently constructed, you're addressing Robin Street, are you experiencing a parking problem?
One more time, please.
Is your building, is there a parking problem for the current residents who occupy your building? You believe no, correct?
Yeah, no.
You believe that there's no problem because you're providing adequate parking with the carport and the spaces, I guess, that are out in front of the building, is that?
Yeah.
Is that what you're stating?
Yeah.
All right. So the two additional bedrooms are not going to be used at the current time for, for any rental?
No.
For the current occupant. Scratching my head a bit by one of the comments of the butters, who said that there are driveways all along the street and no one seems to use them. Well, then you're, you're contributing to the problem yourself. If you have a driveway, and you have off-street parking, where, where I come from is a big luxury, why wouldn't you use it? But. No, no, it's not an argument, but you, you made the.
We're gonna stop, we're gonna, excuse me, we're not, we're not, public hearing is closed. If, if Member Bria, I, I understand that, and if Member Bria has a question, he can certainly ask her to return to the podium, but we're not gonna do a back-and-forth in a popcorn gallery. Mr. Bria?
I'll, I'll repeat what I had said. I believe that the butter's comment was that there are driveways up and down the street, and people don't use them. Now, if, is that a, did, did I hear something wrong?
I will, I will second that, that you did hear that. I will confirm that that was a comment made by one of the cities, citizens that are opposing.
Does the butta wish to correct that statement?
Not, through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I also agree. Ms. McKenzie also said, no one uses the driveway, yeah.
Nope, that's fine.
I, I, I think in this instance, I, 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 I would like the clarification.
Would you mind, do you mind reporting, rep- returning to the lectern and answer Mr. Bria's question?
Those of us that have driveways do park in our driveways. The issue is that there are more cars than the driveways can hold. His house has a two-car carport way tucked in the back, no other cars park in his driveway. He actually has one car that's parked in his backyard, so when this is built, and, just from my own clarification, I was understood that it was a two-story addition, the first floor was to be a new bedroom for him, the second floor was to be a new bedroom for the tenants.
No.
That's not what.
You see in the blue over there?
We were told it was a.
No way to get from the second floor, only one, first floor only.
Excuse me. We're gonna answer the questions that the member is asking. We're not gonna be going from the citizen to the builder or the petitioner. Everything will go through the board, and we'll have forum here.
So, just, we were told that it was one bedroom for the first floor, one bedroom for the second floor, which would give him two, and the people upstairs would now have four.
All right.
So my concern was with a tenant with four bedrooms means yet another car. They have room for two cars in front of their house right now, which is fine, they're in front of their house, except one that has not moved all winter, so there's basically an abandoned car at this point, taking up a spot in front of their house. There's a car in their backyard, there's two cars in the carport, and not another single car in the driveway, even in a snowstorm, and one of their tenant's cars is parked in front of the other neighbor's house. I park in front of my, I park in my driveway, I have two cars. We park in our driveway every day.
Yeah.
My next-door neighbor parks in her driveway every day, so, you know, they have a very large driveway, not a car parks in it, they refuse to for some reason.
Okay.
So that's the only clarification that I have on that.
I think you've, I, I think then you've made the case for them. If they simply utilize their driveway, they've eliminated the parking problem in the neighborhood.
Agreed. We're gonna, we're gonna agree to this, at this point, we're gonna agree to this point and move on, cause we're not, we're not gonna be going back and forth from, out of a public hearing.
A question?
For violation of public hearing. You can answer, Mr. Bria, in regards to the question, have you?
Okay.
Still Mr. Bria's floor.
I just believe that with this particular property, there's adequate parking. It doesn't add to the parking problem that currently exists. It doesn't, it's not going to contribute to further problems, I don't believe. If you're making adequate use of your driveway, carport, carport, the, the spots in front of your home, why, why wouldn't you do that? Just to get along with the neighbors, and to hopefully get them on board with, uh, your proposal to provide, uh, uh, greater comfort for your family. I, why would someone not use a driveway? What, what's the reason for that? Why would you not use your driveway?
Yeah, no, uh, uh, see, uh, he, um, park on the driveway all the time. And, um.
Who uses the carport, the tenants?
Yeah, his wife and his car.
The owners use the carport?
Yeah, and the tenant use a parking.
And the tenant parks in the front of the home?
Yeah, um, uh, they park on driveway, on, on, on the side.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse here. It, it, it sounds like there's adequate parking, if the neighbors just, uh, were a little more respectful of one another and utilized them. Now, if you're not parking, the only, the only reason I can think of that you wouldn't use your driveway is if it's interfering with your tenant, with moving a car every time they're coming and going. That would be the only reason you wouldn't. But you're indicating that the owner and his wife utilizes the carport and the driveway. Is that correct?
No, uh, he, he and his wife use the carport, and the tenant use the driveway.
Tenant uses the driveway?
Yeah, and some, yeah.
So then there's swatch freed up out front? Seems like a lot of swatch here. I, I'm, I'm trying to get to the heart of the, the argument, that it, it creates more congestion. I hate to see, I hate to refuse somebody to improve their home, you know, and, uh, why would, why would we refuse this guy if, if there is adequate parking? I don't know, I said enough.
Have you concluded, Mr. Bria?
Yes, I have.
You're welcome. I, I'd also wanna take a minute, because I wanna defer to, um, DPD, because as we sit here, we have a variance and an application. It is not clear to me how many bedrooms are on the first floor, how many are on the second floor, where they're going, how they're getting in there. We have a plan, which is relative to a demolition, okay? As of our last meeting, we were told there is gonna be no demolition, demolition.
Yeah, no, that mistake by drawing.
Okay, I'm, I'm speaking now, sir, okay? So, the application is not complete in my eyes, because if you're not demolishing the unit, and you're putting an extension, you're putting an addition on, then the, even the addition site plan, that was from the previous meeting, isn't updated. So, as we speak, and we banter about, on all the concerns on this property by everyone who has spoken, it's impossible to even know what we're looking at or even voting on. The application, as far as I'm concerned, is not complete, and if you're not demolishing the building, how are you getting two additional bedrooms into the first floor? Even from a floor plan standpoint, we don't have a floor plan of the existing structure, so, at this point, I'm gonna strongly suggest to you to seek a continuance, and spend some time with DPD, because this is the intention of the last meeting, and this is why I had personally asked, and a couple of my colleagues concurd, to have the builder here today, and my expectations with the builder being here today would to be have clarification on this variance, and what we've gotten, unfortunately, is less. I'm even more confused. Um, the variance doesn't, you, you're proposing to construct a two-story addition in the existing home, but yet we have demolitions and we have plans on a new, on a new building. We have the site plan, which as of now is no longer a valid site plan for what you're proposing to do, and it's creating, in my opinion, some concerns and confusion and, and some neighborhood uneasiness that I don't really think is, is necessary if we had a proper plan, because, quite frankly, this is, this is no longer valid, because, did we even get a note, did we get a notice that this is no longer a de- a demolition? I don't recall. Okay, and generally, we would, if it was gonna be a site plan, change from an active demolition to a new construct, we would receive notice, we would see, receive a formal notice to DPD that there would no further demolition be required. It wouldn't just be a, a verbal notice to us at a meeting, so. I'm all for, uh, open forum, I'm all for full disclosure, I'm all for citizen participation, everybody has the right to government, and that's what, that's what we're here for, but it's difficult for me as, as a member of this board, um, to, to move forward, until we do get a, a new site plan for the existing structure, because I don't, I don't even know if we know how many bedrooms are on that first floor right now, and how are we gonna put three bedrooms in an existing structure? So, those are my comments and concerns, my recommendation, that we, we continue this, we require a new site plan, we, we require, um, the prop- get the proper occupancy of what is, what is in the home, as far as, uh, number of bedrooms, first floor and second floor, and then a construction site plan for this, this, this additional space on the second floor. And I also would look at, I'd like, I'll, I'll reserve my comments as it relates to the carport, but that's inspectional services, but I also think that, that needs to be looked at as well, and that does come under the purview of a zoning board of appeals, so. Those are my comments. Any members of the board have any comments?
I'd like to add something, Mr. Chairman.
Van?
Uh, go ahead, go ahead, um, Mr., um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, I just also wanna concur with you at this, this project, or this petition is a little bit confusing. Um, I, I do agree that does need an updated site plan, um, and, um, a, a updated floor plan or construction site plan. Um, also, I, I think, um, I, I almost agree with Member Bria, you, you, Mr. Ponery, are, are making kind of somewhat a, a parking, parking issue for yourself, especially if you're not utilizing the driveway and, and, and the, the space on-site on property in, in front of your, in front of your home, um, you know, and, and I do agree, Mr. Chairman, um, that, that this should be continued till we get all the, the property, prop documents, um, updated.
So I, I, I hope you understand, sir, that we're, we're here trying to help, um, like, we're trying to resolve, um, issues with, with, help, come, come together with a, a plan or a project that best fits, uh, the needs of the neighborhood, the needs of the owners, um, kinda the needs of the whole city, um, and, you know, if, I think if you have a conversation with, with the butters and neighbors, it, it would go a long way as well, um, you know, I, I think, you know, whether it's a condition or, 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 you know, uh, what, whatever parking plan you come up with, um, you know, if, if you can guarantee, you know, no, no additional parking, um, uh, traffic would, would incur from this project, I, I think it would help, help your petition a lot, sir. So I guess, th- those are just some, some of my comments, but I do agree that this, this should be continued till we get all the updated, uh, documents. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, just in the interest of clarity, I, I, I wanna be clear that all the comments that I made with respect to the parking in the neighborhood were, were all with respect to the existing footprint, as it stands today. I do wanna note, I, I neglected to, to question the actual existence of the carport itself.
I do want to note, I neglected to question the actual existence of the carport itself, which was never properly permitted. And I believe that that has to be resolved and would have great bearing on the situation. So... I don't want to sound contradictory in what I was saying earlier. I thought if that carport is in full accordance with the city regulations and can accommodate the adequate cars, then I believe that I could approve this. However, without knowing whether that carport is in compliance and how many vehicles could be housed there, I think the continuance is the best way to go. I think that issue really needs to be resolved prior to any decision.
Thank you, Mark. Any other board members?
Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, so I think he should also include packing, architectural drawing in his proposal, I mean, yeah. So that way, that can address the parking situation.
Anything else, Philip? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with your suggestion that this be continued and because there are, since this hearing has started, there are more questions now than there were before. When I initially asked how many, what the layout was going to be for bedrooms, I was told there's one bedroom in the first unit, three bedrooms in the second unit, and then there was only going to add one additional bedroom to the first unit and one additional bedroom to the second unit, which would put it at two bedrooms to the first unit and four bedrooms to the second. And then, Member Peck tried to clarify, and now it's three bedrooms in each unit. And looking at the plans that have been submitted, first and foremost, they're only geared towards the proposed addition to the house, nothing about the partial existing house or how it's laid out. And looking at the layout, the first floor does not account for any bedroom to be added to it. It just says great room with a closet and a bath and a linen room, and a linen closet. And then the second floor plan accounts for two bedrooms along with two walk-in closets. So, this is totally confusing now. In addition to the fact that was pointed out previously that there are notes on the back about demolition, and now it's being told that there's not going to be any demolition. So those need to come off the plan. We need updated plans on the layouts, which includes the layouts of the existing house, how the bedrooms are going to be laid out, where they're going to be laid out, and every other additional room. Additionally, we need additional plans for the site plan on how that's going to go. So, there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done here. I would certainly suggest, in first instance, that you go back to the drawing board for a continuance, but if this gets a little too complicated, you may want to talk to Department of, Department of DPD and consider withdrawing it at this point, getting everything in a row, getting all new plans, and then coming back. But I'd be certainly open to just doing the continuance, but I just don't want to see this coming back for us again in one month's time or so, whatever is suggested, and nothing's being done. Because it looks like there's going to be, we need a lot of, there needs to be a lot of work done on this to get this application up to speed on what is now being proposed. So, that's my suggestion, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ben?
Mr. Chairman, in full disclosure, I think, I just want to let you and the public know and, you know, the petitioner, some of the translations has been a little off. So, I urge you, Mr. Ponery and Mr. Najit, to work closely with DPD. I think they even have an interpreter or someone that speaks Kamai. I just know some of the interpretations, you know, you ask a question to Mr. Ponery, he would answer, but you kind of put your own kind of interpretation on it as well. So, I just wanted to disclose that fully since I do speak a little bit of the Kamai. So, I just want to let you and the public know that, Mr. Chairman, and board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZB 2019-5 for variance for 31 Robbins Street. I'd like to continue this to March 25th, 2019.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, please. Approve continuances with the required updated plans.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Thank you, sir. You may continue to March 25th. We'll see you then. Please utilize the resources of the planning and development department. They're there for the citizens. Moving on to ZB 2009, 2019-7 for special permit for UTEC Inc. at 70-80 Church Street. The applicant is seeking special permit approval to open a manufacturing facility within an existing building at 70-80 Church Street. The building is in downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district and the use requires a special permit under section 12.9. G and any other relief required under the Lowell-Zoden ordinance. For a matter of record, we received a correspondence from the petitioner seeking a continuance to March 11th. May I have a second? May I have a motion to strike that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-6 for special permit at 70-80 Church Street to continue this public hearing to March 11th, 2019.
May I have a second?
I second.
Roll call. Continue to March 11th.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Approve continuance.
Hey, that has been, that permit has been continued. Moving forward on the new business. ZB 2019-7 for a special permit, Riverbank Properties LLC, 908 and 966 Lawrence Street, section 12.9. R. The applicant is seeking special permit approval to open a contractor's garage within an existing building at 908 and 966 Lawrence Street. The building is a traditional mixed-use DMU zoning district and use requires a special permit under section 12.9. R and any other relief required under Lowell-Zoden ordinance. Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
Good evening. Attorney James Harrington, Harrington Buck, 11 Summer Street, Chelmsford, Mass. Representing the applicant, Riverbank Properties LLC. I have with me tonight Franco Parego, who is the principal owner of the Riverbank Properties as well as the occupant Nationwide Tile, which is going to be the sole occupant of the building as soon as, assuming we have the relief we're seeking tonight. To give you a little background, you know, when we first looked into determining what the use was going to be, it was a little misleading, where we finally determined that, you know, it is a contractor's garage. And the initial thought with it, when I hear contractor's garage, isn't necessarily what the business that is going to be anticipated to be run out of this property. So, the prior use in this property was, it was a machine shop. It would be, I guess it would be classified as, you know, manufacturing, the built equipment that was used. I know there's technical people that could put this much better than I can, but for coating wire, protective coating on wires used for various industrial uses. With the prior use, there was upward, you know, I think at the height of the business, maybe 10 to 12 employees working onsite, you know, machinists constructing these machines that were, you know, and there were, you know, a bunch of deliveries going on during the day throughout the week. Additionally, you know, for maybe some people that are in the neighborhood can probably recall that there were a lot of vehicles, tractor trailer, not the truck, but the trailers themselves that were parked in the property in the parking lot on a long-term basis, filled with materials. So, it was rather unsightly. The current business, the tile business, is primarily going to be used to run the business. You know, they'll have offices set up, they'll be doing their scheduling, during the day it'll be very quiet. There will be some materials stored onsite, but this isn't a matter, you know, they do large commercial tile jobs. Their tile is delivered to the projects. It's not, you know, they're not loading up, you know, millions of tons of tile and delivering it out. So, that, you know, that aspect of it is going, isn't going to increase the intensity of the use at all. Initially, when we looked at this, we thought that this was going to be a, which was there before, a prior non-conforming use changing to another prior non-conforming use. But then, what we learned is this is actually a conforming use, which is why we're coming under, you know, coming here looking for a special permit for a contractor's garage. We do believe that this is going to be a far less intense use than what the grandfather uses, what could otherwise go in there without any permit at this point. So, and also to give you a little background on the applicant, if you've seen it, you know, I was driving down the highway and I saw one of his trucks, you know, Nationwide Tile, and I mentioned him, I said, geez, that's a really very neat, very nice truck, and it's a very, you know, the operation that he runs is very neat, very orderly. And I think his plans to make improvements to the property, you know, cosmetic improvements to the property should, you know, increase the value for the neighborhood quite a bit compared to what you see there right now. So, I know this, some concerns probably, what kind, you know, how many deliveries are we going to have coming in and out of the property? I know that there were a number of deliveries come into the prior business. You know, I spoke to Mr. Parego, and it looks, you know, on average, they probably only have one delivery come every week. Maybe sometimes they have, you know, a truck bring two deliveries onsite, so. Open up any questions?
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Who wants to speak in favor, ma'am? Okay, if you don't mind approaching the lectern or the podium. It's technically a lectern because there's no step up, correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
So it's a lectern, it's not a podium. Point of clarification. Good evening, ma'am. If you could just state your name and sign in and...
My name is Maria Martins, and I am the owner of property 909 and 913 Lawrence Street, which is a property right across the street. I mean, I've been there for three years now, so I've seen, you know, not a lot of work been going on over there, so I wouldn't mind having, you know, something fixed or nicer for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Okay, any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Any wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jo Ellen Scannell. I'm Director Butter at 900 Lawrence Street. I really have more questions that I'd like to have answered. Please sign in. As a neighbor, we'd all like improvements to the property. My questions range in from how many vehicles would be on the property? Would there be storage of trucks? Making sure that there perhaps would not be any diesel, gas, hazardous material or pumps. We are in the canal, the greenway's there, the river's there. Concerns about that. Hours of operation, any additional equipment that might be stored in either of the two parking lots? And since it's tile, I wonder would there tile, would there be slabs of tile or granite stored in either of the parking lot? Again, I'm just looking at as most of the neighbors would be for something that's, as you said, clean, neat, and orderly to improve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Counselor, if you may, and the owner could speak as well, I think that would be beneficial to answer some of these questions. So, if you could just give us a little understanding on your delivery schedule. So, let's just go through the, let's go through the litany of questions. What would you be, for your main product, what's your delivery schedule looking like?
Probably we'll get one delivery, maybe two deliveries a week.
Is that by tractor trailer?
Not really.
16-foot box trucks, 24s?
Most likely, yeah.
And what hours would your deliveries come in?
From eight to five.
Okay.
Usually before five because usually the delivery company closes at five. So, let's say from nine to three, that's mostly common.
Okay, and your normal business operation hours?
Eight to five.
Monday through Friday or Saturday? Do you have Saturday hours?
No Saturday hours.
No Saturday, no Sunday?
No.
Congratulations. Okay. And can you speak to if they're going to have any onsite now that it comes to mind? Any flammable liquid, storage flammable cabinets outside the property?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay. Any...
Let's store my tile inside.
Okay. How about, how about disposal of used product? You're going to have a site container?
We have nothing. We just use the site for storage only.
Okay.
Not going to be fabricated or manufactured, anything.
Okay. Any other questions that may have slipped my memory that was asked?
I will just point, I do have Ken Lady from Cornerstone Land Consultants here tonight, and there were some comments that were raised with wastewater. I think they've since updated it with, you know, indicating that they were satisfied with his response, and they're going to be putting some plantings in. He submitted a landscape plan to grow some plantings into it.
That was my next question, Counselor. I thank you for being forward, to be a forward thinker. So, there were comments from the city. As you indicated, you have an updated copy, you have answers, so you will be submitting a landscape plan.
Already done.
It's already submitted? Okay. Was there any other, was there another question that we have missed? Okay.
Just to answer those questions specifically, during the day upwards of eight vehicles, no diesel pumps, I think anything along those lines would require a lot along the river, so none of that will be on there.
Okay. Okay. With that being said, I'd like to open it up... With that being said, I'd like to open it up to the board. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I actually think that this is a good project. This is probably one of the best use for this site, this historical, industrial kind of property. So, to me, I don't, we have any reservations or concerns. I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and my colleagues, would like to make a condition. Counselor, I think you or the client said no more than two deliveries a week, then, and deliveries would be within the eight AM to five PM time span. So, there won't be random, you know, trucks or things nine, ten o'clock at night, or two, three, four in the morning, just, you know, to be neighborly. Would you be okay with those conditions of just pickup or delivery at eight AM to five PM?
Yeah.
If that's okay with the board and my colleagues, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, you know, before, I didn't mean to interfere, Mr. Vice Chair, but just, you control your own business, like most businessmen. If you could have a semi-defined schedule on deliveries. I know in my industry, we have deliveries between nine and eleven-thirty, and one-thirty, and three-thirty. We're not going to, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, if you're going to have it two days a week, if you get a consistency with your vendor, then it just becomes a part of the customary process of the neighborhood, and I think that's a lot easier for people to... So, if they know on Tuesdays between nine and eleven-fifteen, your guys are going to be there, and they won't see them again for another week, I think you can work with your vendors the best you can, I'd appreciate that. Sorry, Mr. Vice Chair.
No, no, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this, your tile business sounds like it's doing great, you're growing, so this, this site for storage actually makes a lot of sense. That's the only condition I would have, is if you can just keep it within that timeframe, just to be mindful of the neighbors. But overall, I think this is a great project, and I wish you and the owner the best of luck. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it's a good project. It's a nice use of the building. Just one question for the petitioner. Well, you touched on it, but with trash, how are you going to do it? Is it going to be like a dumpster, or how many, how many times will they go to?
They have no dumpster in there, but just for the office.
Okay, all right. So, like, how many times do you, are you going to empty it?
I don't know, maybe once, maybe two weeks.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's, that's just it. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
So long as the owner is compliant with the definitions of a contractor's garage, which I believe you to be, then I believe it's an appropriate use of this building and space. And I hope your business expands to where you're, you are receiving multiple deliveries over the years. We would just ask you be respectful of the neighborhood in which your business is located. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, I just want to clarify real quick, because there was a question about the storage of product, but I think you mentioned that product is always, there's usually no storage of product anyways, because it gets delivered. It gets delivered to the...
There's some product, but the vast majority of the product is delivered direct to the sites, which are all over.
Okay. So, whatever's left, mostly surplus of whatever's left over at a, at a project, right? Okay. I mean, certainly as long as that doesn't get too excessive, then I guess, you know, I wouldn't imagine there wouldn't be any issue, but, but I share the same sentiments, actually, that Mark has said, that, that this seems to, would fit in, as long as, you know, certainly, I, I know you're probably going to be respectful of what's with the neighborhood and what's going on in the area, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. I do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and speaking on behalf of this, and answering the question, Counselor. I do agree, I do recall many years ago, that where there were tractor-trailers always on that street, there were tractor-trailers left in the park, there were tractor-trailers left down at the other end where the condominiums now are. So, glad to see that type of business has moved on, and we seem to have an aggressive businessman here with a nice business plan, he's, you're well-prepared, speaking to the neighborhood, answering their question, that, that means a lot. I, I think it's a great use of the property. It's definitely, it's a thoroughfare of the city now that the bridges, the bridge is done, the park's become a park again, we have new owners, so we appreciate you coming in here and being prepared and answering the questions for the citizens, that has a huge value.
Thank you.
And I do agree with the project, with that one condition that we're going to stipulate. Okay? With that being said, may I have a motion, please?
Are they in agreement with the condition before I do do that? I just want to double check. You're in agreement with the condition being proposed? Okay. So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-7 for a special permit under section 12.9 R for approval of, to open a contractor's garage with the condition that no more than two deliveries per week must be, and those deliveries must be made between operating hours, eight AM to five PM.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a roll call, please.
Approve what condition?
Approve the conditions.
Approve the condition?
Approval.
Approved.
Counsel, you've been approved. Thank you. Good luck with your business, sir. Thank you for coming in, gentlemen. Thank you to the citizens. Now, moving on to the new business, ZB 2019-8 for a special permit in variance. Yong Zhang. Have a good night. Thanks for coming in. So, the applicant, Yong Zhang, at 150 Wood Street, section 6.3 and 6.3.2, subsection 18D. The applicant is seeking amendment to a special permit approved in 2014 and amended in 2017 to increase the total square footage of internally illuminated signage at 150 Wood Street. The subject sign is for a new retail store, Two Brothers Smoke Shop and Vape, in unit two of the existing commercial building. The applicant requires a special permit under 6.3 and a variance for a wall sign pursuant to section 6.3.2, subsection 18-D of the city local zoning ordinance, and any other relief that is required. The property is located in suburban misuse district, SMU zoning district, is the petitioner here this evening. May you please approach the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and sign in, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Oh, ma'am? Oh, okay, yeah, thank you. My name's Yong, Yong Zhang. I'm the owner of the Sandrama Store in Chansford, and I'm here to apply for the special permit for my customer, Mr. Harry Patel, for this illuminated channel letters and the logo on the roof. And I'm sorry, Mr. Patel cannot come today, because he just had this stomach surgery, and he had to stay at home. I'm sorry about this. I'll try to answer any question if... And this project is close to the intersection of Wood Street and the Westford Street, and there was, there's this, this commercial plaza over there, and this, on this plaza, there are three buildings. Like, if I stand in front of the, this unit two, my customer's store, my, this neighbor is this dentist clinic, and this neighbor is this nail supplies, and in front is TD Bank Building, and then after the building is the Westford Street. So, this illuminated channel letters will install on the roof, just above the door of this unit, and because of the slope of the roof, so the neighbors after the building cannot see that. So, only customers coming to this plaza can see this channel letters, and also the, well, the Wood Street, customers from the Wood Street can, can see it from this way, because there's another building in front of it. So, and I think, I read the, this section 6.3, and I didn't see any, we believe that there's no influence to the environment, to the neighbors, so that's it. This is the project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Did you happen to see the comments by the city?
Uh...
Did you receive a comments page?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And you've gone through that? Okay. All right. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Philip?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a little question. I think I'm fine. Thank you.
Mark?
You received the comments from the city?
Yes.
Are you familiar with these two photographs of the existing businesses that are in the strip mall?
The neighbors from the size.
Okay. So, the, the unit that you'll occupy has the same?
Yes, the same. May I use my cellphone? I can show you the picture.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't print it out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So...
Thank you. Thank you for showing us that digital photo. It actually clarifies a lot better than what we did before.
I'm sorry. This is my first time to, for this special permit.
Doing just fine. Mr. Bria?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I believe that could be questioned is how comparable this proposed sign would be to the existing, to keep the character of the building consistent, and it appears as though it's a rather irregular-shaped sign to begin with. So, judging by the, the measurements that are given here, I believe it's slightly larger than that, that Excel Dental sign.
Uh, yeah.
I, I think an artist rendition would have been, would have been nicer to have seen, but...
Because their roof is a triangle, so I think they have the dental, Excel Dental, they have some space under the sign.
Okay.
So, we will install a little bit lower than that, so the highest will be a little bit higher than theirs.
So, the, your proposed sign will exceed the peak of that roof over the door? It won't?
No, no, it won't. So, I didn't print it out, because we have this neighbor, I mean, picture, and I sent that, I believe I sent to Patrick, but today I didn't print it out, so... Oh, this is... Oh, this one's a little bit higher.
Watch, just watch the color.
Okay, there you go. There's the artist rendition I was looking for.
I'm sorry, I didn't print it out.
All right, then I, I believe it does fit in very nicely with, with the character of the other leased spaces in the, in the strip mall. I'm a big fan of cigars, so I, I guess I got to be vocal for this anyway. What the hell am I making a big issue out of this for?
You all set? Mr. Bria? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, my concern was, the notice of TPW were about the size and the height of the, of the sign, but looking at it, I mean, it is an irregular sign, because you have that portion of it where the, it's kind of that part of there, the smoke from the cigar comes rising out of it a little bit, which could, you know, put it outside the realms of what we had previously approved from, for Excel Dental and other, and other things, other businesses there. I mean, I'd like to be consistent in those things, but this, this one, even though it's a little bit bigger, it's just the, the shape into, the shape of the sign itself and the way it's laid out, it's going to fit in, I think. But a couple of other questions, though, that are of concern. It's an illuminating sign, obviously, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so what are the, what are the, we're going to, what are the hours of the business, and when do they operate, you know?
You mean the...
The hours, the hours of operation of the business? Do you know?
Uh... I'm sorry, I'm...
Okay. So, so the, so the business, the Two Smoke, Two Brothers Smoke Shop?
Yes.
When do they open, when do they close daily? What are their hours of operation? Do you know?
The hours, um... Let me see if I have...
Okay. All right. You came well, very well-prepared, yeah. Wow.
I remember, I remember, we made this hours.
All right. So, just for the record, I've been handed a flyer for the now-opened Two Brothers Smoke Shop, and I guess we're giving them free publicity here now, Monday through Friday, nine AM to eight PM. So, I think that fits in, well, what do we usually do? That's right. All right, Monday through Friday?
Yep.
Nine AM to eight PM?
Eight PM, eight PM will be their closing. On weekdays, and six PM will be the closing on weekends.
Yeah. So, usually conditioned that, what, about an hour? An hour?
An hour.
An hour after closing?
Yeah, maybe one hour or two hours after. In my experience, in my store, I always, like, in this winter, will be six to eight, maybe turn on the, the channel letters. So, could be one hour or two hours.
Yeah. Okay. So, however you normally condition that, I think it's an hour, an hour, on, an hour before dusk, and then off? An hour after closing?
Not to exceed any existing...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right. You have to remind me of that when we do the vote. So, but other than that, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, the other, the other concerns, obviously, too, that come up, which would be, Jared can back me up on this, I guess, would have to be other departments' concerns, would be the use of hookah products on the, on the premises, and, because I know, I think they sell hookah products, what I'm seeing. So, I think that, we don't have, I don't think we can, well, we can't really condition it, can we?
No.
It's a sign, so it's, but that would be other, other departments'...
And in the city of Baltimore, by the point of information, no hookah smoking at the lap indoors in this...
Yeah.
...on the public...
So, but, yeah, so that's, that's not any of our concern, I just want to make sure that that's out, that's noted on there, but, but, so the only condition would be the, the illuminated hours of the signage, so, but, other than that, yeah, again, it's a, it's a very nicely well-put sign. I think it would fit in with the, with the, with the area and the business, and I wish you the best of luck, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think it makes sense, the sign, the way, you know, the, the channel learning, the internal illumination. Sir, is it LED lighting for the, I think, I'm channeling Mr. McCarthy, but I think that's the best route. I think the only condition that, like we have with other signs, is like, like the chairman and Scannell said, like, I think an hour before dusk, an hour before sunset, just to be consistent with all the other signage and illumination with, with the surrounding businesses. But overall, I, I, you know, I wish, I wish you and your business owner and great success, so best of luck to you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you've heard the, you've heard the comments of the board. We have one condition. The hours of illumination will be one hour prior to sunset and one hour after sun, sunrise and sunset, no more than one hour inconsistent with the other signs in the plaza.
Yeah.
Appreciate you coming in here and speaking on behalf of your, your client, and on behalf of the sign company, and grateful you had a rendition with you, so we can sign that into public record. Appreciate your time. That being said, may I have a motion?
So, Jared, it looks like we have a special permit in variance, so we have to take two votes? Okay. Go. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-8 for a special permit for 150 Wood Street, number two, One, Two Brothers Smoke Shop and Vape for... So, Jared, it looks like we have a special permit and variance, so we have to take two votes? Okay. So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2019-8 for a special permit for 150 Wood Street, number two, one, Two Brothers Smoke Shop and Vape for, yeah, special permit for a sign, with the, the condition, hours of illumination to be one hour after, one hour after sunrise, and one hour after sunset.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with condition.
Number Beck?
Approve with conditions.
Number Callahan?
Approve with condition.
Approve with conditions.
Number Domena?
Approved.
Special permit has been, special permit has been approved. May I have a motion?
Three, again, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion again on ZB 2019-8 for variance under section 6.3.2, number 18D, for approval of the sign for Two Brothers Smoke Shop and Vape with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approve with condition.
Number Beck?
Approve with conditions.
Number Callahan?
Approve with condition.
Number Ray? Approve with condition.
Approve with conditions.
You've been approved for your variance. Thank you very much for coming in and being well-prepared. Yes, if you could just sign in for the public record.
Yeah.
Moving forward under other business, there are minutes for approval for January 14, 2019, and February 11, 2019. Members have an opportunity to review these?
No.
Any comments or concerns, additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one, one comment with the minutes, as it regards to the meeting on February 11. I think it's just a clerical error, if, if it said I called the meeting to order, but you were here, so, the chairman called the meeting to order. So, if you could just adjust those on the minutes for February 11, that the chairman was here and he called the meeting to order.
Thank you. Any other additions, deletions, revisions? May I have a motion for acceptance of the minutes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for January 14, 2019, and February 11, 2019.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Accept the approval of the minutes.
Um, accept the minutes with the amended, with amendments.
Number Callahan?
Uh, approve of minutes with amendment.
Number Ray?
Approve the minutes with, taking care of the amendment, sir.
Very well, they've been, been amicably approved. May I take a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Adjourned, have a good evening.